Good evening. Thank you for coming to our regular board meeting this evening. In President Miranda's absence, I, as Vice President, will guide the meeting tonight. It is 6:30 on Monday, November the 27th, and I would like to call the meeting of the Wenton Woods City School Board of Education to order. I would like to request that you place your cellphone on silent or vibrate, and please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Seymour, if you would, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kinn.
President.
Mrs. Rugless.
President.
Mr. Birdy.
President.
Dr. Johnson.
President.
Mrs. Miranda.
Okay, we're going to interject one thing into our meeting notes here. It's going to be Mayor Chuck Johnson of Forest Park to do a proclamation. Mayor Johnson, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting me and allowing me to take part in this event. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation. I brought with me my cap that I've been wearing for the last three years. I had to take it off because Grandma always told me you don't wear caps and hats inside. Chief, I have my hat, the one that I wear all the time. This proclamation will read, "Whereas the sport of football expressed the heart and character of America and for many years has been properly recognized. Whereas this year has been a hard-fought, successful season for the Wenton Woods High School Warrior Football Team. Whereas the Wenton Woods Warriors finished the regular season at nine and one. Whereas on November 3rd, 2017, the Wenton Woods Warriors were victorious over Chillicothe High School with a score of 61 to 28. Whereas on November 10th, the Wenton Woods Warriors went on to defeat Anderson High School with a score of 61 to 21. Whereas on November 17th, 2017, the Wenton Woods Warriors won the regional championship by defeating LaSalle High School in an exciting fashion with a score of 16 to 14. And whereas, on November 24th, 2017, the Wenton Woods Warriors overwhelmingly defeated the Maslin High School Tigers, 56 to 21, to claim a playoff berth in the Division II 2017 State Championship Game, which is scheduled for November 30 at 7:30 PM at Tom Benson Stadium, the Pro Football Hall of Fame, and brought honor and prestige to their school and the communities. And I would add that in the Maslin game, they were down 21 to nothing, but as Warriors do, they came back to win. Now therefore I, Charles H. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Forest Park, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 30, 2017, as Wenton Woods High School Warrior Football Team Day in the City of Forest Park, and I urge all citizens to join me in wishing the Wenton Woods Warriors a resounding victory in the state championship playoff game." Let me just add that on Monday, the 4th, at council meeting, when I am doing my reports and making my announcements, I will be proud to announce that Wenton Woods High School Warrior Football Team is indeed the Region II State Champions.
Did you all get a picture? Did you all get a picture? Hold the proclamation. Yeah, hold the proclamation. Give me those keys. Thank you, Mayor Johnson, we appreciate that, and we're going to take those fine words into victory coming this Thursday. Thank you very much for that. Okay, guys, the next item on the agenda, or the first item on the agenda, is district honors, recognitions, and gifts introductions. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Vice President and Board, thank you. I received a special letter that I'd like to read before we do the special recognitions and gifts, and it came from a parent of the students attending Primary South. She writes, "I have two first graders and a kindergartner who attend Wenton Woods Primary South, as well as a fourth grader at the elementary school. Our experiences in the district have been amazing. My three youngest all attend preschool through Wenton Woods and made it an unquestionable difference in the preparation for kindergarten. Their preschool teachers and principal were supportive, encouraging, and maintained high expectations. All three of my younger children had Shelley Hood as a teacher, and I can't imagine our lives without her. She basically became a member of our extended family as our children went through foster care, adoption, and their emotional journey. She consistently communicated with us, and the term 'team effort' doesn't do her justice. I was so nervous to leave our cherished preschool and head to Primary South, but what I found out was only one more support and one more amazing teacher. Emily Perkins had my son Jeremy, and now has my daughter Sarah. She is open to ideas, willing to figure out coping methods that work for our daughter, work with our teachers to help her succeed, and most importantly, let my daughter know that she is special and loved. Ms. Perkins is exactly the person my daughter needs to be the best version of herself. Hayden is a first grader who has Jennifer Chaney. Kindergarten was a struggle for him, and I had a conference with Ms. Wallace at the end of the year to think about the best student fit for him. Ms. Chaney is a match made in heaven. Hayden now loves to read. He comes home from school spouting off his accomplishments and showing us all of the new words he knows. Ms. Chaney believes in Hayden and knows how he learns and what's best for him. Mrs. Giglio is my son's..." Oh, that's...
...of all people.
That was Hayden telling me. Wow, thank you, thank you, Jeff. Mrs. Giglio is my son's Jeremy's teacher. He is a gifted learner and loves to share. Ms. Giglio is constantly looking for ways to help him grow and allow him to shine as himself. Just yesterday, at a parent meeting, she said she would attend a workshop where she thought she would learn some new techniques that would help him with reading comprehension. When I send her a message in class dojo to follow up on emotional concerns we see at home, she is always quick to respond. Last but not least, in our team superheroes is Danielle Wallace. She knows each one of my children and is truly on Team Zistler. She is honest, considerate, and another part of the support system for our family, I know that she is always available to talk with, and she understands our unique perspective as adoptive parents who have children who've experienced trauma. She cheers for our children and knows how to talk to them to build their confidence and self-esteem. We are warriors and know that the district is the best fit for our family. I cannot convey how much of the team of teachers and really the whole staff has helped our children grow, flourish, and develop. As I left Primary South after my three parent conferences, I was choked up with tears with the commitment the staff is to my children. They are champions and deserve all the recognition we could possibly give them. Motivated by pure goodness, they are community changers and future builders. We are so honored that they are part of our children's lives. Sincerely, Nicole Zistler." Wow. All right, so I need Mrs. Shilla Cottle to come up, please. Shilla Cottle did something very extraordinary. It was one really heavy rainy day, and she found a bookbag outside, full of cash. No, no.
Even more important.
It was a student bookbag with his homework in it, and we managed to get it to the elementary building so the student would be able to have his assignments on time, and so we appreciate Ms. Cottle bringing it over personally, and so she will receive this special pin tonight, and it's called Above and Beyond. So we'll actually pin this on you.
You pick the place. I'll look after you. That would be awesome, thank you.
I want you to wear this every day?
Yes, sir. I will not take it off, I'll put it on my pajamas. Thank you so much. I want to say that this is the best school district in the world, and how do I know? Our son BJ graduated from here and last year is an architect with CECO. He designed OSU's new dorms, Yale-Connecticut's new dorms, and four new Mercy hospitals. This year, he's working on the Health Span Building in Columbus and five others. I would also like to say that our son Steven is here with us this evening, and I'm so proud of what he's doing. He has finished his degree at DeVry University in IT and Business Management, and I told him he could live with us forever, that if I scream at my computer where I have my business downstairs, "Steven, help me," and he runs downstairs, he can live free for us. So Steven, thank you for that, and I'd like to thank my husband of 46 years. We've had the blessing of being here, I've served on City Council for 12 years. We've worked in conjunction with the school board, and I'm so proud of this school district, I'm so proud of the school board and everything that you all do for our community. I finished up my 12 years with City Council, I'm semi-retiring, I'm a nurse, I do life care planning for catastrophic injuries, and I also do case management for people that are injured in workers' comp. It's a blessing to live each day, it's a blessing to be in this community, and thank you again.
All right.
Thank you. I have to go take my shower, I can't take it in the shower. We want to get a picture of our superintendent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Superintendent, you want to be in the picture? Yes, sir. I was so honored to find it, I thought, somebody's put a lot of work in this, it's got to go to the school board. Thank you.
Is poet Bullock's here? Not here yet, we'll come back. The Gold Star Kiwanis. Gold Star Kiwanis Student of the Month Award. Anybody here for the Kiwanis group?
I'm Alex Press.
Who are you?
I'm Alex Press.
Not yet. All right. Mr. Penikoff, would you come up and represent Kiwanis, please? So the October Kiwanis Student of the Month, and Mr. P., you want to say a little bit of why we give this award?
Well, I don't know what the school has said about him, but this young man, I'm so glad I'm here. This young man is part of the mentoring group that I'm a part of at the high school in the Academy of Global Studies. So he and two other seniors are lending their expert... Oh, here's another senior right here. Nice to see you, Jasmine. Your time comes in a minute, yeah. But the Kiwanis Club likes to recognize students who have gone beyond and done some things special for themselves, or for the school, or for the community. So, how am I doing, Mr. Superintendent?
You're doing incredible.
We didn't rehearse this, I'm sorry. I thought someone else would be here. So this is an award of achievement from the Wenton Woods City School District Board of Education and the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club, which I happen to be a member of, which is why he pulled me up here tonight. So this is in recognition of your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to refresh my memory on how much. This is a gift card from Gold Circle, $25.
Gold Circle.
Let's get a picture.
How long did you hold that going?
We did. It seems like in three years.
Chuck said, "I love this." Congratulations.
Alex, want to say a few words?
Okay, I'd just like to actually thank Mr. Penikoff for being such a great mentor to me. I actually had his wife when I was a freshman in the mentoring program, and he's been really great with helping us as seniors, helped to mentor our freshmen now, so, yes, that's it.
So Alex actually was the October winner, and we've been hunting for you for months. So we finally located you. The November winner is Princess Dyer.
Princess. On behalf of the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club and the Wenton Woods Board of Education, you're given this achievement award expressly for you. Congratulations.
Princess. That was a good try, Princess.
I tried. So, hi, I'm Princess. I've been in the district since first grade, and I've loved every single minute of it. I have so many opportunities with the high school and with AGS, like going to Italy, Arkansas, DC, and all of the different academic opportunities we get through the classes and all the new people we meet, and I'm really thankful, so, thanks.
The next award winners are the Skyline Athlete of the Month Award, and it's innocent here tonight. It's hard catching up with that little guy. We'll catch you. All right, so we'll have two others for November that will be Shakira Reeves and John Smolerman. Can you come up, please? John is the quarterback on the football team. Now, I'm going to read a little bit about John. John has a... John's an 11th grader, he has an unweighted GPA of a 3.85, a weighted GPA of a 4.08. Way to go, John.
Yes.
Activities: high school soccer, club soccer, National Honor Society member, soccer referee, Northrop Grumman Scholarship Program for Engineering. To be nominated for the Skyline Student of the Month, students must maintain an academic standard of 3.0, show respect for teachers and other students and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice games and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules, have high moral character. So Jonathan?
You are the man. If you were, please.
I didn't know I was going to be saying anything, so I'm just going to wing it. I don't see him here anymore, but I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Lumpkin because I know it was a hard season to plan. We had a lot of games in one week, and so... But I'm just really thankful, I'm thankful for my coaches that have helped me develop as a player, and so... And then also hold it down in the classroom as well, so, thank you.
Bring Mama up. We need to get another shot. Alex, did you bring your dad up for the photo?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, come for Dad. How do we miss that? Sorry about that. Mr. Penikoff, can you join us again for this one? Can you get off for us? All right, thank you.
So we had the students come up last month for October. Unfortunately, Eliana couldn't make it, but we wanted you to see her great drawing, and she was part of the Zooplin Air Contest participation. So here's a little bit about the process. Congratulations to Senior Eliana Washam, who was one of the three students chosen to represent Wenton Woods in the First Annual Zooplin Air Contest at the Cincinnati Zoo. The students, three of 40, high school art students from Greater Cincinnati competed during the weekend of September 30th by drawing animals based on their observations in their designated locations of the zoo. Plin air is a French expression, meaning in the open air, a description of painting outdoors. Eliana Washam, that's her work.
Just thanks, it was really fun, it was a great opportunity, so thank you.
How long did you take to draw?
I spent about half the day... We were there from... We were there for two days, from the time the zoo opened till it closed, and took me about half the day.
Thank you. Incredible. Wow.
Okay, who want to take a picture, and Mom?
Sure.
She doesn't want to be in the picture, so let me go ahead and do it.
The next award goes to the students that participated in the United Nations, Model United Nations Competition. Wenton Woods High School Board of Education offers its congratulations to the following scholars who participated in the Model United Nations Competition that was held at Wyoming High School on November 4th. They were among over 300 students from Greater Cincinnati Region who competed in this yearly event. So there was Jasmine Reed, Kerry Sullivan, Peyton Mack, and Kate Ingram. Three of these students received the highest honors for position papers. So Mrs. Crenshaw, you want to talk a little bit about the process and how it was developed?
Mr. Warren coming too?
I really wanted someone to come up that knew about it, so...
Good evening, everybody. Actually, I brought the heavy hitter with me because she has the details in regards to what happens, but we're extremely proud of the students. The United Nations is part of our global seminars that we offer, Zero Bell, and it's where 10th graders actually access this opportunity. Ms. Crenshaw, I'll give you a little bit more details in regards to it.
Good evening. Sorry if my lines are a little repetitive. Mr. Smith reviewed what I had, and I think he stole some of what I had to say. Wenton Woods students competed in the Model United Nations Competition this year hosted at Wyoming High School. Our students competed with top schools around the state with over 300 student participants. Specifically, our students tonight are being recognized for their excellent position papers. What are position papers, you ask? A student has to take on a position of a foreign country, research, and understand the country's stance on an issue, and then they have to write a position paper, which is their first initial argument or stance, including possible world action on the specific conflict or issue. This task requires extensive research as well as ingenuity as they create a resolution that satisfies the United Nations. There were over 15 committees, and each consists of 20 to 30 students. Only one student from each committee is recognized, and we are here tonight to acknowledge and celebrate our four students that participated and achieved highest honor.
I believe we have one here tonight? Two, come on.
I'm Jasmine. I just wanted to say thank you because I don't feel like, without the help of AGS, I wouldn't have such a worldly view, and I don't think I could ever see myself participating in a Model Union competition. And then I've been to two, and it's been a lot of fun, and I've had a lot of fun debating on world issues, and we often say we could solve the world issues better than the actual UN, so...
It was a really, really great experience, just like when we do it as sophomores, but it was very, very different, and that didn't mean we were unprepared, because Mr. A. and Mr. Locke are both such wonderful teachers, and thanks to them.
He'd like for you to send your letters to the real UN.
Considering mine was from the perspective of a member of the Russian provisional government in 1917, I'm not...
All right, ready to go. I don't know, it still might be... The Skyline Teacher of the Month. This work could not be done without our incredible, incredible teachers, so I'd like to bring up Mr. Allender. All right, just a little bit about Mr. Allender. Mr. Matt Allender is our selection for Skyline Teacher of the Month. Mr. Allender is a nationally board-certified teacher who teaches eighth graders in an interdisciplinary classroom for English, Language Arts, and Social Studies. His area of certification is in Language Arts. He has embraced project-based learning and regularly plans units of instruction based on the principles of the New Tech Network. Just at our exhibit night in October, it was easily demonstrated that many of his students prepared excellent projects with a reflective understanding of their growth. His hallmark is his relationship-building with students. He is patient, a good listener, but has high expectations for their learning. Mr. Allender is a dedicated teacher, often the first one here and the last one to leave. He is always thoughtful and creative. His creativity especially shines through any time he leads staff in a professional setting or prepares remarks about his students for an audience. He is the type of teacher that students from years to pass come to visit. Any parent would be happy to have their child in his class, and that's actually from your principal, Mr. Sankar.
Well, I've been teaching in the district at the middle school since 1996, and I've been glad. Every year, I'm the kind of guy that if I weren't glad, I'd go somewhere else, and I'm sticking around, and I plan to stick around for quite some time, and I do like... Over 26 years, I've seen a lot of change in the district, a lot of different directions that we go, and I haven't always been excited about some of those directions, but the direction we're going with the New Tech Network and PBL, I'm thrilled, and I'm very eager to see where it'll take us. I'm very excited to join when the buildings come together, and I'll be able to learn from the people who've been doing it for so long and learn from their experiences, and it's been great. The other thing I got to say is, apparently my staff is making me look really good because I learned from them so much. We're so supportive of one another, and I do my best to steal their really good ideas and see if I can make them just a little bit better, and so if I've achieved anything, it's because of the great people that I work with, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, you're good. Yeah, it's all curtsy, and I have no glasses on, I'm so sorry.
That's why his dates is bring back curtsy, right?
Yeah, I didn't want to put my glasses on for the picture, I can't see.
All right, our final award tonight goes to an incredible, incredible member of the community. So this Community Spirit Award is presented to an organization or individual to recognize their significant contributions to the Wenton Woods City Schools. So I'm going to, before I bring her up, I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of the... of the community police activities that she's involved in. She's on the Community Response Specialist. She's a neighborhood block watch, community patrol person. She's part of We Thrived, Quell Rich Apartment Owner Association, IEP, Vacation House Check, School Resource Officer, Forest Park Clergy Association, Finance 101, Law Enforcement Expo, Latino Adult Conversation Class, Capstone Initiatives, and it says, "Please list pending activities your agency is in the process of implementing to engage to improve community relations." And one of the things that she writes is, "In 2007, we planned to continue the previously listed programs. We also plan to implement several new initiatives. The first initiative is designed to improve an additional outreach to our Latino community members. The focus will be a class designed to help members of the Latino community understand how to access city services as well as to provide understanding on the mechanics of American policing. The second initiative involves outreach to the other churches with Forest Park. We're not able to participate in the first clergy police academy. We plan on completing another clergy police academy." And finally, Officer Evers is in the planning stages of fundraising to help the Meadows Nursing Home with a Christmas initiative for their residents. Officer Evers.
Thank you.
Cole, he's going to make you say a few words.
Okay. Everybody knows I'm a really good talker, and I could keep you up here for hours, but I won't do that to you tonight. I appreciate this, and really, truly, it is a great, great honor, but in all sincerity, I couldn't do any of this without the support of everybody in the community. Lieutenant Ward has made it possible for me to have the position in the first place to be able to do these community activities. The Power Duo Denny's, if I didn't have them, every time I need something, I just call Corinne or I send her a text and say, "Hey, I need, do you know where I can find?" The two of them never fail to answer me or to pick up and do whatever they possibly can to help me. The principals at the school, any of the schools, all I have to do is stop in and say, "I need." I stopped at the schools today, the elementary and intermediate, and said, "I need six of your students from each of them for shop with a cop." And they sent me a message before the end of the day, "Come pick up the names. I got them ready." So it's great to say that I've done this, but really, I haven't done this. The community has done this. So I thank you for letting me be a part of it. Bring my lieutenant up here. He can be in at least one picture.
I'll stand right here so people can call. Right here.
Come on, come on.
Make no mistake, I work for her.
Thank you. Because we all know I'm a bit of a flutz.
There's one more announcement that we'd like to make while we have the audience. So, Mrs. Denny?
Thank you, Superintendent Smith and Goodie Mean Board. Overwhelming warrior pride expressed district-wide by our staff and students, as well as a four-and-a-half-hour drive, travel time, requires us to close Witten Woods City Schools this Thursday and Friday. This closure alleviates a student coverage and safety dilemma due to many staff members using their available leave to attend the game. This closure will also give students and their families the opportunity to support the Witten Woods Warriors.
Very good. So you are aware. Go Warriors.
Mrs. Denny, just one question. There will be an all-call that'll go out, like, tomorrow and again, and again on Wednesday to remind that Thursday and Friday?
Actually, I requested, if I could step out. I'm going to do that right now, and we're also going to translate to Spanish before we send it out. I already have it translated. In addition, we have, I created a webpage, and it's on the homepage of the website, and it says, "State Championship Game." If you click on that, it has all the information you're going to need around, not just events, but the game, just game information, ticket information. So please go to that webpage.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and congratulations to all of the people who were honored this evening, to the students and to the staff. We appreciate what you do for our district, and your positive contribution to the support of the district is seriously appreciated by this board and for the administrators and the staff as well. We will now take a five-minute recess and resume after that five minutes. We'll now resume our regular board meeting. I don't believe we have any public comments, so we'll move on with the approval of minutes, 5.01. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the regular meeting of 10/23 of Seventeen's meetings as presented.
Second? It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is 6.01, the Treasurer's Report. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
My, thank you. We have, for the general fund revenues, year-to-date revenues, we've got 20.7 million. Most of the revenues for the month-to-date were in our foundation, and of course, we received our homestead and rollback from the State Department. General fund expenditures are at 16.6 million, which has the district currently running approximately 2.3% under budget, or 1.2 million. This is exactly where you were this time last year. Different dollar amounts, but same percentage-wise. The last page represents all your financial activity for all funds. We had 74.9 million in all funds, 18.5 of which was a general fund, 10 million in our building fund, and 45 million in our classroom facilities. You may notice that some of the uncommitted funds for classroom facilities are down from the, because we currently now have a commitment to SHP for 7.4 million. So there are encumbrances against your classroom facilities project this time. And that's the report for finances, unless you have any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Seymour?
I do actually have a question now I remember.
Okay.
Question, because as we were looking at, as I was looking at the receipts that come in, and I was looking at the percentages, and I noticed that with the state foundation fund, is that typically the pace in which it comes in? Has there been any changes?
Right, we should be right around 36% for four months.
At this point, okay.
Thirty-three to 35% for four months.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Okay, having no more questions, the financial statement will be submitted for audit for October 2017. Mr. Seymour, back to you for 7.01, the Treasurer's Recommendations.
Currently, for our investment report, as of the end of October, we had approximately $90 million invested. Interest earned for the month of October was $98,000. The general fund of that $98,000, the general fund generated $20,000, and your building funds generated $78,000. And your project total, since the inception of the receipt of the sale of the bonds, we've generated $347,000 in interest proceeds.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission.
Wait, wait, wait. We're on 7.01.
7.0, I'm sorry, clicked on the wrong one.
Yeah, the investment report.
I sure did. To approve the, make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Mr., are there any questions or things you want to ask? Okay, having none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call it vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
The motion is passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.02, the resolution requesting authority to file the modified tax budget for 2018, 2019. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Each year, the board must give me authority to file an amended or modified tax budget for the Hamilton County Budget Commission, and in that, you're giving me permission to use the five-year forecast as part of our budget forecast for the necessity to levy the taxes and collect them. And this is a resolution that we will send down to the county auditor, saying we're going to be filing a modified budget.
Okay, board, a motion is in order.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2018-19, 2019 fiscal year as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Again, it's back to you, Mr. Seymour, for 7.03, the resolution refunding the bond.
What you have before you is a very lengthy resolution to go into refunding of our bonds, which we just sold. There's been a change in the federal laws. We have with us tonight Kent Cashel. He's our board financial advisor. He's with RBC Capital Markets, and he's the Ohio manager. You all know Kent Cashel. He gives us great, sound advice. It's a very lengthy resolution. Basically, out of it, you're going to give the board president and the treasurer authority to proceed in selling and reissuing and calling and restructuring the bonds. But I have asked Kent Cashel to join us tonight. He's going to explain it to you because his knowledge is much greater and better than anything I could begin to try to explain, so Kent Cashel.
Thanks, Randy, and good to see you. I'm sure you all didn't expect to see me so soon. First, let me say, go Warriors. We were talking a minute ago. I've got clients all over the state of Ohio, and just got another email from somebody who knows where I am tonight saying, to say, "Go Witten Woods," you know, because all my clients are public school people. So that's very exciting, and it's also nice to be here and see all of you and to see Eric Martin, who I haven't seen in a long time. That's nice as well. So what happened here is that the federal government is throwing us a curveball in our business. You know that there is a massive tax overhaul that's being contemplated by Congress right now. Everybody knows that. The House of Representatives has their version, and the Senate has their version. The House has passed their version, the Senate has not. In both of those versions, surprisingly to all of us in the industry, they're taking away the ability for you to advance refinance your bonds. And what that means is, in the bond issue we just did, we built a call date in five years from now, and that allows you to call those bonds in at that date and refinance, which we would do if we could save money. Normally, you would not do that this soon after the issuance of bonds, because we have to buy an escrow until that call date. That drags on the savings. I would probably normally be here three years down the line as we get closer to that call date if rates were lower and we could save money. They're proposing to take that away. So what we're doing now is authorizing the refinance now, which is earlier than we normally would, and trying to hustle, and we're going to hustle, and if it saves money for your taxpayers, we will do it before the end of the calendar year, when this takes effect. There's every possibility, I'm going to call Randy up and say, as you might imagine, all across the country, this is happening. So the middle of December, where the average volume of bonds issued might be eight to $10 billion, it could be 30 in one week. Well, that's going to drive rates up. So there's every possibility that I call Randy and say, "This doesn't save any money. We're not going forward." Then we're nowhere, and by the way, so we're no worse than we are right now, which was already a great result. You've already got your money, you're building, you've already got invested, which is a great report. So just to be very clear, sometimes when people see me this soon after bonds are issued, they're like, "What's wrong?" It's Randy's first question was, "What's wrong?" When I called him, I called him and said, "I'm coming to your office," and he, "What's wrong?" Another client of mine in this area said the same thing. So nothing's wrong. And the reality is, is that we can only end up in a better place. And by the way, we won't do this to save a dollar. We're not paying professionals, you know, like me and your lawyers to do this if it doesn't save. There's some thresholds that GFOA sets for whether or not you should take the time and effort to do it. We're going to take the time and effort, but no expense if we don't go forward. So this is simply an authorizing resolution, to authorize it and delegate that authority to your president and your treasurer, if it makes sense to do so. I hope that we can. You'll see in the resolution that it's authorizing an amount not to exceed of 48.7 million. That represents all of the bonds that are callable. I can assure you, it won't be that much. One thing I can tell you today is, we will only be able to save money on a subset of those. So you see, it uses the word "not to exceed." I mean, I shouldn't assure you, I mean, if rates went down dramatically for some reason, we might be able to save money on all of it. But most likely, the actual issue we do is going to be much smaller, if we do one at all. Any questions? It's pretty straightforward. We will do it if it saves money, and if we won't, we're in no worse shape than we are.
Board, can we have a motion before we do our discussion?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of classroom facilities, unlimited tax general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017 as tax exempt or as taxable obligations, and one or more series of bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 48,705,000. Authorizing the execution of a paying agent agreement, authorizing the execution of a certificate of award containing the final terms of the bonds, authorizing the distribution of official statement, and authorizing the execution of an escrow deposit agreement securing the refunded bonds and related matters as presented.
I'll second.
And that was clearly written by your lawyer.
Very legalistic. All right. Now, board, if there are any questions or discussion for Mr. Cashel, we can entertain them at this time.
No, I think it makes sense. I mean, we're just sounding about, you know, giving us options.
Again, and I would tell you that almost every district that I know of in the state that's in the same position is doing the exact same thing right now, and it's a hustle. It's a hustle for us. I'll be here, I'll be back tomorrow morning, but we're going to hustle, and if it works and if it saves your residents money, we'll do it.
We appreciate it.
The last major tax overhaul in this country was 1986, and that's when they allowed for one advance refunding prior to the call date. So now they're taking that away. What this will mean is, you'll still have bonds that are out there callable in five years. We just won't be able to take advantage of refinancing until we get to that five-year point, and who knows if rates will be low enough at that point or not? At that point, there may be no savings. Again, we're never any worse off. This is an option for the board to be able to exercise.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate that. We appreciate you keeping us on your radar and saying, "Hey, this is going to save our taxpayers' dollars to do this."
I appreciate you saying that, because that's what someone else said to me, and that's my job, but, you know, I appreciate that, because it's been a hustle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Any, since there are no more questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously for the resolution refunding the bonds. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Next on our agenda are the reports for the superintendent. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor again.
Yes, Madam Vice President and Board, there are several upcoming school events that I'd like to just kind of talk about a little bit. On December 6th, well, December 4th, there is the Winter Band Concert. People think that the band is only during the athletic time, but they have their own concert, and it's a fantastic concert, and it's at seven o'clock in the auditorium, and I hope people can attend. But also, two days after, is the Choir and Orchestra Hallelujah Concert, and that's in the auditorium. When you have this many incredible musicians, voice and instruments, having the opportunity to showcase them is, you know, one of the things that we like to do. one of the things that we like to do. There is a recognition, Student of the Month recognition. Uh, this one is pretty interesting at the middle school. This says six fifty AM. I will check that to make sure because I know, Dr. Johnson, you'd love to be there.
Yeah, six fifty.
Yes.
AM.
And then there's a Winter Middle School Concert and also Choir Concert and Orchestra Concert. Then there's various activities happening throughout the district. But one of the things I want the, uh, Board, hopefully you guys can make it tomorrow, uh, we're doing a special recognition for the team. And the team is so excited about the playoff opportunities, uh, the championship opportunities, that they're going to tour every school uh, with their jerseys on and give the little kids high fives, thank them for supporting them, even though they can't come to the game, they're bringing the activity to them. So, they're going to have the Drumline feature, but they're going to visit every school, starting the first thing in the morning. And, uh, this is going to be very, very exciting.
So, what time is the first, um?
First stop, I think the first stop is nine thirty. Nine thirty.
Say it again, Joe.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, okay.
So, uh, I think it's going to be also just great for the little kids to see them up close and personal. Uh, those, those young men and also, um, the, the Drumline will be featured and I think it'll be exciting. Some of the activities will be outside with a, uh, kind of clap in and celebrating and high five and all this and Go Warriors. And so, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday are spirit days. So, we want everybody to kind of keep that enthusiasm along the way. Even though some of our We Warriors can't make it to the game, they can still support us long distance. So, there you go.
Actually, you won't really know the impact until they get to the next year. You know, it's nothing like band night for the kids because they like, that, they're sung. They're like, "I'm going to be in a band now." So, when you do things like that, it really does, you know, solidify them wanting to participate, whether it's a football or the band or just, it just increases warrior pride. So, I'm glad to see that, um, a pep rally would be great at the high school, but when you involve all the schools, it just, yeah, it just, it, it makes a difference. So, going to try to be there for that. So, we'll see, we'll see.
So, it starts at eight thirty AM at ES?
At ES.
Is there another, I mean, what's the next school?
We'll send the, we'll send the schedule to you.
Okay.
We'll get you a schedule tonight.
Yeah, do that.
So, you can be prepared.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice for the Board to be there to kind of rah rah and run along with them.
What are your school colors?
With your blue and green, no red.
No red, no red and black, no red and black.
I'm good for showing up with the wrong color. So, I'm going to be really aware that it's a blue and green kind of thing, okay? All right, um, next up, Superintendent, you have the, um, floor again for recommendations, um, for specifically personnel schedules.
Yes, Madam Vice President and Board. Are the recommendations to approve the personnel schedules as presented, Schedule A, resignations and retirements, Schedule D, support staff, and finally, Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Board, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice President, I'd like to make a motion, or to move to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Second?
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion, um, on the resignations, uh, support staff or supplemental staff schedule, A, C, and D? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Uh, next up is nine point oh two, Job Descriptions of the Drill Team Coach and Choreographer. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, Vice President, excuse me, and Board. The, um, Drill Team has gone through a whole different version. They're not just girls with flags. I mean, the choreography and all the routines that go along with it. And I think that, um, this has gone beyond the scope of just, uh, few flag routines. There's choreography that goes along with it. So, the essential duties and responsibilities have been expanded, uh, where I will read bullet number one, two, three, four, five, six. Organize, supervise, and choreograph summer practices, summer performance, week-long, uh, pre-band camp and week-long band camp. Responsible for ordering, assembling, cleaning, managing props and flags. Responsible for ordering, fitting, and maintaining uniforms. So, this is not just a one-time deal. This goes on all year. And I think the, uh, choreography that lends itself to this, uh, work is absolutely incredible. And, um, so, we wanted you to look at it to, uh, approve this job description.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the Drill Team Coach Choreographer as presented.
Second?
Second, all right, all right, thank you, Ms. Rose. It's been motioned and seconded. Um, are there any questions with regards to this job description for the Drill Team?
I do, I do have a question. Um, is the Drill Team, is it, um, is this responsibility primarily for the fall football season? Or does the Drill Team also participate throughout the year, um, in other activities?
They, I think they participate in other activities, but I think the other part is, yeah, they're the dance team, as well as any kind of parades that, that come our way. So, um, the girls are always motivated and their practice times are incredible. I don't know if you, if, if the Board has had the opportunity to see them at games, but they make us very, very proud. Yes.
Now, I was excited about enhancing this. That's why I was hoping there was more opportunities, um, throughout the year.
There are more opportunities, yes.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Um, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that motion passes unanimously for the job description for the Drill Team Coach. Uh, Mr. Smith, it's back to you again for nine point zero three, the job description for the EMS supervisor.
Yes, the Educational Management Information Systems Administrator has become a real exciting, not only exciting, but a very important job. Uh, counting all of our numbers, making sure that our, all of our lunch counts are accurate, make sure that all of our attendance records are straight, making sure our graduation numbers are right. Our reports to the Ohio Department of Education is a very extensive one. And I think our, um, the district management system is the lifeline of our system. So, it has to be accurate. So, we wanted to just make sure that the Board understood all the essential duties and responsibilities that go along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description EMS supervisor as presented.
I'll second.
I thought she left. I saw, I, you were with a beautiful little girl who tipped out. So, she must be somewhere. She went home?
Mm-hmm.
So, the EMS supervisor has a daughter who's ten, who can drive? Okay, I'm just checking because, shocked me. Ms. Kilgore, come up for a little bit because I think they need to know a little bit about, I mean, you're behind the scenes, but you make us look great. So, thank you.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. So, we'll let you come up and explain and we'll ask some questions. Thank you.
You want me to explain to them what I'm doing?
Explain to them a little bit about what you do so that they can understand how important your role is.
Okay. Um, hi, everyone. My name's Bernita Kilgore. I'm the EMS coordinator for the district. Um, I have to say, I've worked with Randy probably for fifteen years or more, often one. So, um, the EMS position has changed dramatically. When he actually recruited me to do this, I used to be a state auditor, okay? So, um, he said, "One day, this will be really, really important." And I have to agree with him. Right now, my position, as Mr. Smith has already said, is responsible for making sure that all of the funding that is received for the district is done, um, accurately. So, I'm sure you've already been told that instead of having an October count, we are now funding the district based on the students' attendance. So, one of my primary duties is to make sure that the buildings understand what they're doing with the attendance and the new, um, House Bill four-ten, to make sure that they understand what needs to be done for that so we properly record the new requirements per that law. So, one of the other things, as he mentioned, is the disadvantaged students. So, I am responsible for making sure that we have all of the students that are receiving free and reduced lunches coded so that we receive our money for that, as well as the students who are on IEPs. So, I make sure that I assist, I should say, the Student Services Department in making sure all the IEPs are recorded properly so that we can receive our money for the federal government, which happens October thirty-first, and then the rest of our state funding for the rest of the school year. So, in a nutshell, that's the big pieces of what I do. I also help the staff, uh, with any issues that they have with the state software and anything else he asks me to do. So, if you have any questions for me, that's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Um, Board, do you have any questions or discussion around the job description for the EMS supervisor?
Um, I, I want to tell you that we applaud the hard work and the effort that goes into that. We appreciate your, uh, carefulness and timeliness of your, um, of coordinating the information and communicating that with our buildings and the importance to our school district and our, and our, um, community, um, and just how important that position is to the funding aspect, to, uh, providing the opportunities for our students. So, I appreciate your diligence and your hard work. Thank you. Or somebody else has, sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
I just wanted to make sure that, to let you know that's important.
Thank you.
We do, we appreciate the work that you do. Okay, if there are no other questions?
And she's regularly audited.
And she's regularly audited, thank you.
She didn't say that.
She didn't say that. So, that means the numbers are right. We appreciate that. If there are no other questions, um, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Thank you, that motion has passed unanimously. Um, next brings us to nine point zero four, the Revised Board Policies. These are several policies that we had, um, already as a first read. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Vice President and Board. Uh, the final attachments are for the revised policies, thirty-two seventeen professional staff, forty-two seventeen classified staff, sixty-four twenty-three use of credit cards, seventy-two seventeen property weapons that I'd like to come back to, eighty-three ten operations public records, eighty-three thirty operations students' records, and ninety-two seventy relations equivalent education outside schools, participation, extracurricular students not enrolled. Uh, the reason I wanted to come back to seventy-two seventeen property weapons, uh, they're, the weapons under control of law enforcement personnel. I wanted the public and the Board to be aware. Handguns in the possession of a person who has a valid concealed handgun license or who is an active-duty member of the armed forces with a valid military identification card and documentation of successful completion of firearms training if the handgun remains in the vehicle with the individual or is left in a locked vehicle when the person exits the vehicle, meaning they cannot bring it on school property.
Right.
Uh, they, it must be locked in the car and it has to be, uh, out of plain sight. Uh, some districts thought that because people had the concealed carry, you can walk into buildings, you cannot bring it on the school property or into the school building. So, that's the one that we wanted to make sure that the Board was very aware of and focus on because there are no ifs, ands, and buts about it. The, uh, the law says you cannot do it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that clarification. Um, Board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make motion to approve the revised Board Policies as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions or discussion regarding any of these policies?
Just one question. You had stated that, um, it could be in the vehicle, the locked vehicle, on the parking lot with on, okay.
Yes, but can I go into the building? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Rugliss?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. The motion carries, uh, passes unanimously for the Board, Revised Board Policies. The next item on the agenda is, uh, item ten point oh one, which is the Legislative Report. And, um, since President Miranda is not here, I think we will forego that report until next, uh, meeting in December. There are some House bills that we want to, um, get more input on before we speak to them. So, we'll just, uh, hold that, uh, report out until she returns in December. The next is ten point oh two, which is the Great Oaks Career Technical Center Report. Mr. Birdy, you have the floor.
And I'll be very brief, and I brought handouts, which I'll get to everybody in a few minutes. But, um, one of them was just going to be the, uh, cover page of the State Report Card for the Great Oaks and what they look like. They've got As and Bs and, um, interestingly enough, there seems to be a little bit of contradiction when you look at their report card as there are on many report cards where they have a, uh, a score in Prepared for Success of a D, but post-program outcomes, they've got an A. So, I'm not sure how you can't be prepared for success and have excellent post-program outcomes. But, uh, you know, it's the world, it's the world we live in. And then, as far as Winton Woods students in the spotlight, they have, uh, four students that are in the spotlight. Jenny Nieto Guerrero, who's a dental assistant currently working with a, uh, dentist. Brittany Rucker, uh, from Scarlet Oaks, who's a Digital Arts and Design, uh, program person. And she was, uh, Student of the Month for October. We have Summer Place, who's also at Diamond, is it now at Diamond Oaks? She's a Digital Arts Design person and she is part of the Equity Council at Diamond Oaks. And we had a Branda Lim, who's in the Cosmetology Program. And she also was a Student of the Month for October at Great Oaks. So, and that'll end my report.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Birdy. Um, the next item on our agenda is eleven point oh one, and that's the Board's motions and recommendations. Does anyone have anything to present?
Um, on, I forget what the date was, but a couple weeks ago, um, we had a follow-up meeting with, um, the University of Cincinnati, um, um, Engineering Department, Mr. Smith and I, um, along with, oh, they're not here, Princess, um, what's her last name? Crenshaw?
Crenshaw.
And, um, Principal Martin to talk about the opportunities to expand, um, support, um, in the math, um, areas. Um, Dr. Holden wasn't able to make that meeting because she had another commitment. So, we're looking at moving forward and doing something, um, after the holiday where Mr. Martin is going to set up learning walks so they can first understand what we do. You know, sometimes we have, um, we want to create partnerships, but, um, partners may come in and try to change the dynamics try to change the dynamics of what it is that's already in place. So, we want to bring them in to really see what's happening, and then transitioning, you know, have Dr. Holden and Dr. Ragland a part of the process. I believe you already know Whitney Gaskins. So, just really looking forward to expanding that partnership with, between Winton Woods City Schools, the National Action Network, and the University of Cincinnati.
Sounds good. One question. The learning walks would be for the benefit of the UC partners to come in and look and see what we do now, and how they can, you know, partnership with us? Is that what that is?
Yes. One of the things you've heard Dr. Holden mention, having project-based learning in our schools, I think our universities need to know what we're preparing students for, and maybe universities start making, they'll start making the paradigm shift to how they instruct students for post-secondary opportunities. So, we can get the universities to start having some idea about what's happening with project-based learning. I think this would kind of give us some, some legs to move our process faster.
And, you know, and just really based on some of the conversations that we've had about what's happening in the Winton Woods City School District, they were very impressed with the project-based learning, and, because there's a, you know, how do students work together? And that's something that they want to see, that their students are able to work together and work on projects. Funny story, my daughter sent me, recently sent me a text and a picture of her like, oh, just leaning back, because she was like, "This is what happens when your teacher, when your instructor at college asks you to work on projects." And she missed the project-based learning, but they're doing a lot of project-based learning, so it was, it was kind of funny.
That is funny. So, your daughter's confirming that we're going in the right direction.
Going in the right direction. And in fact, my son, actually, teacher, is doing PBL in her English class, so.
Very good. That's very good. Anyone else?
Comments? I mean, are we...
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, we're getting to that. We're getting to that. We're still on the board. Motions or recommendations?
I have no motion.
This was a recommendation. So, that's, that's fine. You, you fit it in. It worked. It worked.
I recommend that more of you get involved, probably.
All right, how about that? Okay. All right. Okay, well, next, we'll move on to the next item with his Board members' comments. And Mrs. Rugliss, I had you down first, so do you want to add anything else to what you just added?
I think I'm good.
You're good? Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Birdy, let's go with you.
Okay. You know, obviously, the honors and recognition piece of every board meeting is, is an exciting and joyful time for us as board members to see these students, and also the teachers, and see them recognized. I think that the discussion on the model United Nations competition and how our students did there, you know, should remind us that we're not competing with other people just in the state of Ohio. We are really global. It's a global competition for our students when they leave, when they leave our, our school district. And then to hear the letter that Mr. Smith read from Mrs., was it Zeisler?
Yes.
And then, and then just to hear Mr. Allender, someone who's been in the district for a long time, make his comments about his excitement of going towards PBL and, and how he's looking at that. That's, that's very refreshing, and I'm glad, glad to hear those things.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Birdy.
Oh, also, one more thing, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Congratulations to the football team, and looking forward to being there Thursday night.
Ooh, yeah. Mrs. Kunt?
I share the same sentiments. My favorite part of the meeting is to celebrate our students' successes, celebrate our teachers, celebrate, that's what the school board is here to do, is to provide the mechanism, the opportunities, the platform for our students to excel and for our communities to succeed. I also want to echo, you know, our, our football team right now, it's kind of, it's very nice that they're bridging a gap to the past and the future. What I'm seeing on Facebook is a lot of alumni, I'm a Forest Park Charger, there was only a few of us. They only existed from 1973 to 1990. We're a rare breed. And this group out there, this has touched and ignited something, a pulse that the community feels, whether you're Green Hills, you're Forest Park, you're, you're not, you're a warrior. It connects, it touches, it bridges that gap that for long has been hard to, to reach over. And I think we, we're smart enough as a community, and there's nothing wrong with being an opportunist. I'm all for that, because it benefits the children. But we have an opportunity to reach back into our past, to pull them up to the future, and to take them forward with us. I had a fellow alumni of mine reached out to me last night and said, "You know what? I'm really excited. I want to get a football alumni," or, what did he say? "An alumni booster group for athletics." He's very gung-ho and excited. There, I'm seeing on the Facebook page, "We are warriors," or "Celebrate the Warriors." That's catching fire. That is powerful. There's a lot of power and momentum going on in our community. We need to capitalize it. The football is just one little piece. And, and he also made a statement to me that I want to share with our community, that last year when he headed up Coach Senkard, which is a longtime coach, football coach back in the day, a long time ago, and he headed up with all these football players, and they had alumni celebration, that they got the opportunity to meet the players, and that touched something with him. He said they were very respectful, well-spoken, wonderful students, that he would, if he didn't have that opportunity to come in and see, would never know. So, I invite our community, come in, see what we're about, talk to the students, see what the children do, how they present themselves. You'll walk away with a whole nother image than possibly that you may have right now. But celebrate the successes. That's what we're here as a board. I'm excited with our team to work together and, and to promote those successes and to continue to grow. So, I'm very excited and go Warriors, and celebrate all of our academic and athletic prowess, so.
Absolutely, yes.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
One thing, one thing I forgot. I just wanted to thank Dr. Holden and her participation on transforming, transforming public education, and she did a de-capital conference.
Yes, she did America.
Incredible.
Yes, that was very good. I'm glad you mentioned that, because that was the first thing that I had written down here, but that, that's good.
He'll still, he'll still... I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Be quiet.
Well, I want to thank the district for sending all of us to the OSBA Leadership for Learning Conference in Columbus. And as usual, the conference for me was very eye-opening and enlightening. Every time I've gone, I've learned something that I can bring back. It's a great opportunity for me to talk with other educators, to brainstorm, gather ideas from other board members and colleagues around the state of Ohio. And again, I was going to mention that Dr. Holden did an excellent job with presenting at the panel discussion. And at that panel discussion, although there were, what was it, five different people that were doing project and, and problem-based learning, they all had a little different perspective that they brought, and I, I think that the way you carried the torch for Winton Woods and for what we do was very, very noteworthy. And in my opinion, it, just going to that conference is time well-spent and money well-spent from my perspective. So, to continue the development and the education of this board. So, we're all still fairly new, and so I think that that's really good. Again, to echo the sentiment of Mr. Smith, December is a short month, but it promises to be a busy month. We have a lot going on, like you said, with the winter choir concerts, the band concert, the orchestra, there's student achievement things going on. There's a lot going on in December, so I just challenge you and ask you, encourage you to look at the calendar and see what you can support, and attend those events that are, you know, within your scope to try to support them. The students, there's also some projects that are going to be presented during that time, and we always need people to come out and listen to our students' projects, so that you can give them, give the, the teachers some feedback and the students some feedback. They love that. Also, again, it cannot be overlooked about our going to the state championships. I mean, we're going to talk about this forever, you know? And that's great, we're going to talk about this forever, but the game against Akron, and it's being played in Canton, and that's only about a 20, 25-minute ride for them. So, they're going to show up in big numbers. So, Warrior fans, we're asking you to get in your car, come, get on the bus with us. You know, let's hit the road, and let's show them what Warriors do. Show up in your blue and green, so we can create a sea of blue and green as we arrive in the stadium. It's a good time to be a Warrior, isn't it? Feels good to be a Warrior. I had someone tell me the other day, "I've got more Warrior pride now than when I was actually in school." That's okay. We'll take that, too. You know, so, like you said, on Facebook, there's, 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 there's been some really good energy that has been, you know, kind of transforming and moving through this district. And like I say, it's a good time to be a Warrior. There's a lot of good things happening. We welcome you, as Mrs. Kunt said, all of our stakeholders, to join us, to create a better tomorrow, or better tomorrows for the students of Winton Woods, and can't say enough, go Warriors, go Warriors. So, finally, Mr. Smith, would you like to have words?
Yeah, you. If you get a chance, please look at the podcast that two of the players did with the football coach.
Yeah, it was excellent.
The podcast was absolutely excellent, where the students didn't talk about football. They talked about their academics and how they work collectively together in projects, and how those projects helped transform them to be better teammates, better athletes, better support people. And then finally, since this game's being played at the Pro Football Hall of Fame in Canton, there are, there, there is a $70 million project underway, so parking will be a stretch. So, you will probably more than likely need to, when you get there, there will probably be a shuttle that will pick you up and take you to the stadium, so just work on your time accordingly. Try to leave as close to noon as you can, so you can beat the traffic. I'm not sure how the shuttles will run, if those shuttles are designated just for Winton Woods fans or for the other team. So, just be aware. So, thank you.
Who's running the shuttles?
It's the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Everybody will be on that shuttle.
Yes.
They probably will just be for whoever's in the parking lot at that time to jump on.
The shuttle would probably be a nice event going, but coming back, it could be interesting.
Oh, yeah.
When everybody's leaving, I'd say.
Standing room only. Yes, go ahead.
Kudos to the Winton Woods staff and to Mr. Smith for the vision, because I stayed, I think it was one of the last sessions at the OSBA on preschool, and to see everybody that was hungry and trying to implement preschool programs and, you know, and actually, they had CPS that was presenting their information, some information for you, and some other districts. But we're ahead of the curve with the preschool, and, and it was interesting seeing, listening to the conversation about those who wanted to get preschool started.
And you do have your schedules for the activity for tomorrow. It would be really good if you guys could come out as the team goes on tour.
Warriors on tour.
Warriors on tour.
Oh, that sounds pretty good.